We have sort of a hybrid meeting tonight. We have a quorum present here in the building with Nora Klein, Jack Lynch, Peter Conroy, and myself. And then joining us via Zoom is Michelle McEckern, also a planning board member. So at this time, the first item on our agenda is to approve the May 12, 2022 minutes. Did everybody get a chance to review those minutes?
Yes.
Anybody have any comments on those?
Nope, I was good.
I move to approve the minutes of May 12.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Michelle also voted affirmative. Motion carries with at least a majority, if not unanimous. Next item on our agenda is a Form A lot at 3 Riverbend Road for Martha Schroder.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Dave Madigan from Madigan, Linsdale. And what we have here for Mrs. Schroder is currently, this is a large oversized lot, about 13 acres, single-family residence. And Mrs. Schroder would like to just simply cut off a re-uphastler, approximately 2.17 acres, non-buildable lot. And she would like to donate that, or she's going to donate that to the Wildlands Trust. By doing that, it doesn't affect her frontage. Frontage stays the same. Her lot is oversized, so she's well over the minimum. Her upland area is well over the minimum. Access for the Wildlands Trust people will be through her property. She's in the process of working with her lawyer, doing like a little easement that she's gonna have on her current lot one there that's remained. I think access, to tell you the truth, would be very limited. The Wildlands Trust is basically just looking to protect some land along the river. Mrs. Schroder has always been very conservation-minded. She would like to donate that by cutting that off to the Wildlands Trust. That's pretty much it. If you have any questions, if you wouldn't have the, try to answer them.
I'm sorry, not looking right at the plan, but does the, her current house lot have, or does it meet the frontage requirements for contiguous frontage?
Yes. Her frontage is close to 300 feet on Riverbend. And then she does have a little bit there on Bond Street.
So by taking that parcel off, it doesn't create any greater nonconformity to her current lot in any way?
Correct. It doesn't impact her frontage by an inch. And the area goes down, but the lot will still be nine and a half acres. And the upland area is well over the 52,500 required.
And just as a belt and suspenders, I know you didn't show it, but because it's pre-existing, but could you squeeze a front yard circle on that? Is it possible?
On the new parcel, eh?
Or on the existing house?
On the leftover lot one. I'm not sure, because I think that upland circle, I don't recall what the radius is offhand, but that's a pretty good center.
Hundreds of 60 feet, I think.
Yes. Well, you can kind of see that that's a very narrow front area that she has. And the lot is non-conforming.
So it's sort of out of our purview, but I guess I'm just bringing it up because I wouldn't want you to create a nonconformity and then take land away from it and somehow it get viewed that you've made an illegal nonconformity.
Right.
With the transfer of land, I talked to the building commissioner about that with the zoning. And we, again, it's just for her protection. Because you're conveying the property. So I think that that might lose some of the nonconformity.
Well, as you know, it's pre-existing nonconformity. And it, I guess, would really depend on the zoning enforcement officer if he feels that a change to the lot makes it more nonconforming, or does it still?
It didn't, from the discussion, it didn't create a greater nonconformity to the lot. But, and I'm not good at recalling, he gives me so much information all at once, that I didn't want to create a nonconformity that put her in a position where she is conveying the lot and the parcel. There's the whole merger thing with.
Right.
I just want to make sure that you've got it, so you're comfortable.
Again, we are, and obviously that's something she's gonna talk to her attorney about, but also from the board's perspective, you'd be approving a plan if for some weird reason there was an issue and she never put it on record, then it's a moot point. Your approval is just simply for the Form A process. But if she found out that, to your point, or Nate's point, if something was amiss, then she just doesn't have to go through with the transaction.
Right. Yeah. My opinion is that this is an okay Form A assignment.
Right.
That there's no change to the frontage or the access to a street.
There is change to the access because you're cutting off a piece, land-locking it. So we talked about they were gonna create an easement.
But it's labeled as non-buildable parcel. So you can do that. It does not require to have frontage or access.
Well, I was told otherwise, so I just, and I discussed it with, because you're conveying a lot, it wouldn't be a problem if you weren't conveying it. And I think that's why the access is needed, is because it's gonna be conveyed to Wildlands Trust.
I believe that's the way it's gonna be. It's gonna be conveyed and fee, but it also may be conveyed as a restrictive type of easement, and it would still stay with the lot. I'm not sure exactly how she's doing that. She wants to petition it off as a parcel, as it's shown unbuildable.
Yeah, and I understand that the lot doesn't have any more nonconformities by doing what you're doing. So it's a legitimate Form A. But I, you know, again, I already mentioned, I just don't want you to create something that you have to come back, or that it didn't work because of some stupid legality.
Yep.
But I agree, Mark, that it's, the house lot is fine, and taking that parcel off doesn't create anything bad. Do any other members have any comments?
Very generous, very generous gift.
Yeah, very generous.
Did somebody say something?
I was just agreeing with everyone, saying it's very generous, it is.
Thank you, Michelle. So do I have a motion to recommend approval?
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Form A lot for 3 Riverbend, Martha Schroder. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Michelle? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. Thanks for coming in. Good to see you.
Hi, Mark. Okay, I'll have him.
Mark, do you happen to have any paperwork for tonight's meeting?
Lady Jemison?
Yeah.
Yes, I do. Take one, pass it around.
Scratch paper? Next item on our agenda is a continued preliminary plan for 44 Clear Pond Road, applicant Derek Maxey.
Okay, do we get?
Go right ahead.
Okay. Good evening, thank you. My name is Rick Fryberg from TEC. I'm the civil engineer representing the applicant for the preliminary plan for 44 Clear Pond Road. As the board probably recalls, we were left in front of you at the end of May, at the hearing then, to talk about a preliminary plan for the parcel. During that meeting, there was a discussion about some issues with the plan that needed to be resolved prior to sort of advancing to the definitive plan phase of the project. As we talked about during that meeting, really, the purpose of this preliminary plan is to basically draw these lines in the right spot to make sure that we're headed on the right path in terms of subdivision, to make sure that the plan is in full compliance with the subdivision control law. We, during that meeting, reviewed two different alternatives to satisfy the outstanding comments. One alternative was to create a through street from Clear Pond Road to Harcourt. And another alternative was simply to keep the cul-de-sac, as was originally submitted on the plan, and simply add a property line like this to create a right-of-way and two development lots. We have gotten one question to confirm back on the plan since it was submitted, and that was just to confirm that the lots both had adequate frontage. They both do. The smaller parcel here has 175 feet of frontage on the cul-de-sac here. And the larger lot has about 220 feet of frontage on that side. 175 feet is the minimum for the business zone that it's in. Each of the lots have sufficient lot area to meet the dimensional requirements of a lot. And so I guess the purpose tonight is obviously to see if there's any other questions that the board has. I don't believe that the board actually has to take any action at all, but to see if there's any more feedback before the plan begins to advance towards a definitive subdivision stage. Thank you.
Mark, has council reviewed this version of this, or do we have?
No. I mean, it's a preliminary plan. They don't usually review plans. I mean, they'll review legal documents if we ask them to.
And how about the zoning enforcement official? Has he seen it?
I'm not sure whether he's seen this version of it or not.
Okay. We probably want to make sure he gets a copy of it, just to belt suspenders of who looks at that for us, you know, rather than be down the road and backtracking. Anybody else have any comments or concerns?
Not at this time. I don't really have enough information yet without specific plans.
Okay. Your recommendation, Mark? Michelle?
I was just gonna say, I thought we did request town council advice in regards to a moratorium on the DL, because these preliminary plans do reference a zoning which is currently under review in court of laws. So as far as I know, that's still ongoing. So I believe we did request council's advice on that.
I don't recall that. I mean, it would have no bearing on the current zoning, what's in the current bylaw, because.
Moratorium would go through town meeting, and it doesn't come into effect until town meeting, correct?
Well, as far as the removal, it doesn't come into effect until town meeting. And as far as the lawsuits related to a different development project, there's been no decision. Therefore.
It's still the law of the land.
It's still the law of the land, what's in the zoning book. So, I mean, I don't think we need town council to opine on that.
Well, I guess my concern is to protect the town from further litigation if, if, depending on the outcome of the current two lawsuits, I guess. Would be the opening of town for further litigation if we move forward with something that is currently still.
I mean, if the Development Opportunities District is ruled invalid by the courts, then regardless of the preliminary plan, if it's invalid, it's invalid, and they cannot move forward with their development as it's been explained to us in the past.
All right, so any action taken on this plan would become invalid if that zoning was deemed invalid.
If the zoning's deemed invalid.
I just wanted to say, is it okay to?
Go right ahead.
Sure. So I'm following what you guys are saying. And I just wanna make the distinction that there's nothing proposed on this preliminary plan. There's no buildings proposed or uses proposed on the plan that necessarily require us to proceed with something allowed on the Development Opportunities District. So, in other words, a preliminary plan could be advanced even if there was no Development Opportunities District, if that makes sense to you. So.
It does state right on those plans. It does state it, so that's my concern.
Yep. So the purpose of the plan is to utilize the zoning regulations that were in place as of April 19th, when the plan was filed. But that doesn't necessarily mean that the only, that the only purpose for the plan is to utilize the Development Overlay District. That is the intent of it, the Development Opportunities Overlay District. But it also puts in place, freezes for the other ordinances that are in place as of then. So if zoning became more restrictive in, let's say, the business zone or something like that, the preliminary plan would provide some plan protection there.
Understood. So, I mean, at this point, if nobody else has any comments on the subdivision that he's shown, I think we would continue. So I'll open the floor to public comment. Would you mind stepping right, just so I can let people speak to the microphone?
Of course.
Yeah, yep. Come on up and sit at the table there and identify yourself.
Sure. Lois Nielsen, 51 Harcourt Avenue. So I'm a little confused about this preliminary plan. I thought the last planning board meeting, there was a discussion about making Harcourt Ave the access point. And I think it was Mark that spoke about maybe not having that be the access point.
And it's not.
Yes. Okay. That's not what he just said? Okay.
Well, we, he had brought up that that was one of the two choices.
Yeah.
And the planning board felt that we didn't want that to be a through road because of any potential development dumping onto Harcourt. It would be unnecessary. So currently, they're just using the existing driveway to the Lakeville Country Club, and coming in and making a cul-de-sac off of that to create frontage for two separate lots. So no roadway would go through to Harcourt, based on this plan.
Okay. So we're just talking about that fairly narrow access point that's there now? And we're just, that's that residentially zoned area, correct? Off of Harcourt? That initial where the solar panels are? Are we talking about that area there?
That would be one of the lots.
So we're talking right now just about two residential lots in that particular area? We don't know.
They're just talking about two lots, whatever the zoning is, and two lots.
So two, good, two lots encompass this entire area here?
Yeah, that's what they're depicting.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yep.
All right. So, but we're still not at the stage of the definitive plan at this point, correct?
No.
So this is still considered a preliminary plan?
Yep.
Okay. I think that's all we have.
Okay.
It's a little concerning, of course, as you would all understand. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any comments?
Oh, maybe I have one more question. So can I ask, what's the next step after this? If the board, planning board approves?
So we're not approving anything tonight, but Mr. Fryberg has come in for, he's provided us with a plan that generally shows what we commented on at our last meeting when you were here. So him doing that, now we're looking at it. If we have other comments about change a lot line, or you know what we thought about it, we don't like that, he'd come back with another plan or sort of finalize this plan. I would assume to come back in with a plan to hopefully be approved.
So he is still talking about that access area, though, being off of Harcourt Ave now?
No.
No, he's not. He's not, okay.
Would you mind using your pointer to kind of just show? Yeah, go right ahead.
Yep.
There's Harcourt over here.
Yep.
So the solar panels are right here, just like that existing dirt road. And I think there's some barriers down here, so that stays just how it is today. This is the Country Club driveway.
Yep.
Comes down like this. Basically, the proposal is to make that Country Club driveway into a right-of-way for the project. There'd be a cul-de-sac right here, and then just one lot line that gets added like this. So the solar panels become one lot, and the rest of the lot is a second lot with this public way right here, with the only access point being off of Clear Pond.
All right. All right. I understand it better now. Thank you.
Thank you for your clarification. So if there are no other comments from planning board members, I would say that Mr. Fryberg should proceed with a plan in this general direction and bring it back for another meeting.
Do you wanna, do you want him to bring back the preliminary plan? Or do you wanna vote on the preliminary plan?
Bring back a preliminary?
Oh, yeah.
Vote on a preliminary?
Do you wanna, do you wanna vote to, take a vote on the preliminary plan? Or do you wanna continue this to another meeting?
Continue to another meeting.
You need to take a vote on the preliminary plan. Whether it's affirmative or denial does not affect his ability to file a definitive plan. But at some point, you're gonna have to take a vote on the preliminary plan.
I understand that. So right now, it's just a dashed line. It doesn't show a hard lot line, so I'm not gonna vote to approve. I feel like he needs to come back now with either a definitive or a hard preliminary plan for us to approve.
Yeah, so, Matt?
Go right ahead.
Yeah, so the next step would be, so if the board feels generally comfortable with the rough location of lot lines, it's all this preliminary process is for. Approving the preliminary plan is not an approval of a subdivision. It's only basically an acknowledgement that roughly the lines are in the right spot. The next step would then be after that, to begin preparing the definitive plan, which are much more detailed. We'll have to show the design of the cul-de-sac, the cross-section of it, the drainage, how the easements are laid out for the drainage of the lots, that kind of thing. So the definitive version of the plan, I think, will have all the detail that you're asking about. But generally, we kind of need some action to be able to proceed with that. Otherwise, the next time I come, we'll just be looking at kind of the same level of detail again with the preliminary plan. Which we're happy to do. You know, if the town needs more time to think about it, that's okay.
Well, you know, again, as I stated earlier, our zoning enforcement officer hasn't seen it, so I think we'd like to at least have him put his eyes on it before we take that action. And I'd be fine with us, you know, you not having to come back. This is the plan. We sent it to him. He sends comments to us, and then we could just take action at another meeting.
Perfect. Okay, yeah. And I'm always happy to come back, too. It's, this is.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
Michelle?
I just wanted to ask, because I know in our rules and regulations, it does say that copies are supposed to be passed out to all the other boards and communities and commissions. And I would like compliments back as well, you know, from them.
Well, the original plan was submitted to everybody from the submittal, but the revised drawing has not been forwarded. Kathy's been out for over a week, so I'm trying to do a little bit of everything, so.
So why don't we give everybody a little time to look at? And whenever you think it's appropriate, or whenever you think people have had a chance, just let us know.
Yeah, if you're good with that.
Come back, and, yeah. And we can, again, you know, what would be helpful, I guess, is if there are any comments that come through that process, if you know about it ahead of time, then we can sort of provide an updated plan.
Yeah, Mark would certainly communicate with you.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, and I apologize if I feel like we're slowing you down as much as, I think that the town cook right now has a little bit of turmoil within, and some stuff's been, it appears to have the air of secrecy, and I don't wanna have that. So I just assume vet the process fully.
Yeah, we have no, you know, the only outside date we have on this is, I think, the statute is seven months from the initial filing.
Right.
So.
Well, well, within it.
Yeah, so we have until November to file a definitive plan.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, barring anything crazy, I'm thinking it's probably our next meeting.
Yeah. Yeah. Makes sense to me.
Okay.
And so should I request a continuous?
Consider that done. So I make a motion to continue the preliminary plan discussion for 44 Clear Pond Road until July 28th.
Yep.
At 7:00 PM.
Second?
At 7:00 PM, you have a joint meeting with the zoning board. So why don't we make it 7:00? And at 8 o'clock, you have a public hearing for.
The Development Opportunities.
DOD. So why don't we say 7:30?
7:30?
And if it's, we start a little late, that's fine.
Do you want to do the following?
Yeah, we'll enable the following, if that's easier, yeah.
August 11th.
And that way, it gives people time, if there's any comments that come out of it, we have time to address it, get it back in everybody's hands.
That'd be great, if you don't mind, yeah. Sounds like we have a big agenda that night anyway, so. So move to continue until August 11th at 7:00 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carries, so we look forward to seeing you then.
See you then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next on the agenda, item number four is discussion on possible articles for a fall town meeting. First item on that list is alternate member.
So right now, we have five members. And if a board member can't attend a meeting, a hearing, if we have hearings that continue more than one meeting, then someone can't vote, can no longer, so we would have to, if we had an alternate, that person can sit in and vote on instead. The alternate pretty much is a sixth member of the board as far as discussions, reviewing, and being present at all the meetings and hearings, so that, so that you have someone else participating in case they do have to step in and vote on a particular hearing. So I do have some language.
ZDA uses, and it's worked out pretty well. We have a couple alternates.
If two?
Yeah.
Five plus two, is that what the ZDA is?
Five plus two.
Okay. And are they?
If nothing else, it was productive in discussions.
The ZDA is appointed.
Right.
What would this be, how would it be proposed, that this member be?
So it would be appointed by a joint meeting of the planning board and the Board of Selectmen. So I'll read, kind of, this is a draft from another community. It says, "The planning board shall have an associate member designated by the chairman to sit on the board for the purpose of acting on any application in the case of absence, inability to act, or conflict of interest on the part of any regular member of the board or in the event of a vacancy on the board. This appointment shall be made by majority vote of the Board of Selectmen and the planning board, and reappointment shall be considered on a yearly basis thereafter."
Came in very handy when people would have to recuse themselves because they had conflict.
I think that's the most that was used on zoning board, not necessarily for absences.
Because there is, there's not an issue if you miss a meeting, because we've had that on some big hearings where those folks with council's recommendation can watch the meeting that they missed and sign a document, they get mullinized to confirm that they were up to speed on the hearing.
It's called the Mullins Rule, but the Mullins Rule needs to be adopted by town meeting in order, I don't believe whether it was ever adopted by the town. I do not see it in any of the general bylaws or our. I do not see it in any of the general bylaws or power.
Yeah, well, I just, I know it was used in council's recommendation, and the town clerk did that before, but... I'm, I'm not disregarding or discounting having an alternate member. But I do think that what Nora said about having to recuse would be, I think, a bigger thing.
I mean, we could also, since you're aware of the Mullins Rule, we could also, I could also write an article that we can discuss next meeting as well, to see whether we want to move that forward at the same time.
I, I think that would be, I'd feel comfortable with that, because I, I feel like if somebody's been on the board for five years, or three years or whatever, and they've been to most of the hearings, but they missed one out of a three-hearing, public hearing, one meeting, that we can't have them participate, and they may have, uh... A great outlook on it, or whatever.
Right. But sometimes, I mean, in other communities, I've been at, they've had both, and sometimes someone misses just one meeting in a big development, and they review the documents and the meeting, and they continue to sit under the Mullins Rule, or they've missed two meetings, or they have to recuse themselves, and you have the alternate. So it's a, kind of, it's kind of good to have both, so.
Yep. So I think I'd like to just look into the language on this a little bit.
Okay.
Keep it on the next meeting's agenda, and if you could add the Mullins Rule thing for discussion, that'd be great.
Okay.
Would you want two, if you, if, if we, would you want two or just one?
Well, I think that those are all things to discuss.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
Does anybody have any input as to that? I mean, we're a five-minute board, do we want one alternate or two if we do that?
My personal feeling is one for this board. ZBA came in handy because there were a lot of conflicts. And in one case, there was two people who had a conflict on the same thing that was being voted on. But it gets a little messy when you have two, just my, my opinion.
Who gets picked?
Yeah, who gets picked to vote and who doesn't get picked to vote when somebody can't vote.
Oh, yes.
You know, do you flip a coin, is it person who was there first? I do, I do see the need for one for this board, especially in, in light of, it looks like we'll probably have a pretty heavy schedule for a few months coming up.
Michelle had her hand up too.
Michelle, did you have a comment?
Um, I was actually curious where this came from, because I don't remember seeing it in a master plan. So I was just curious who proposed it or, or where it came from.
I put it on the agenda, so I think, moving forward, as the board in this town has larger and more complex projects, I think it's, uh... Having one or both of these additions would be helpful to the board and to the town.
Does anybody think that this affects interest in other people running for the planning board?
It, it could, I mean, it's a good place to get your feet wet, so to speak.
I think the term does, um, does, um, the term of this board intimidates people, so they might be like, yeah, I'd do it if it wasn't five years, you know?
I don't necessarily think that's what's intimidating people so much.
It's the chaos. But it might be one thing, it was for years prior, so.
Well, it's really the, I guess, if you have an associate member, and...
And that's renewed every year, that's renewal every year for an associate member, so.
Right, but I'm just saying, so let's just say, we just had Barbara opt to not run. She just didn't want to run again, her term ran out. So if you have an associate member, is that now that they're the automatic shoe-in, and people don't want to run, because they're like, well, the associate's just gonna get it?
I don't think, I personally don't think so, because that associate member may or may not be as well-known in the public as somebody else voting, running. Does the experience count? I think it does, but I think there's other things with residents that count.
I think the experience is great, the conservation commission used to have associate members, they called them. They couldn't vote, but they were there, and it was almost like a, a schooling for them.
Right.
To graduate to now I want to join the board. And that's kind of, I guess, what I'm likening, likening this to in some ways.
Well, it is in, in some respect, Mark, I, I see what you're saying, does it give them a leg up? Okay, but if it does, they, they could have paid the dues in doing the, the work and putting the time in.
Is there, if there's an opening on the board, isn't it announced in the, in the paper, the local paper?
Yeah.
If it is, then someone else could say, I'd like to, you know, throw in my opinion, that's what I did.
I mean, it's certainly something they can use to run on, that I've been doing this.
Yes. Okay. So stuff to think about, we have that on the agenda for the next, well, do we want it on the next meeting? Is the next one gonna be pretty full, between the joint 310 Kenneth Welch and the public hearing?
Well, I think we still should.
Keep it on for after, maybe?
We should have, still have the zoning articles, the list of them on, and, you know, if it gets too late, you can, you know, adjourn the meeting.
And Mark, your plan for these are for fall town meeting?
For the fall town meeting.
And what's the deadline for?
Well, there's no deadline yet, but, you know, probably be toward the end of September.
Okay.
You know, it'll be late October, early November town meeting, so.
Okay.
Okay, so next on the agenda is the open space residential design bylaw proposal. I know you had emailed us two different copies.
Two different versions, yes. One was the original one that we submitted to town meeting. And one was a version that, Miss, uh, I'm, hold on, I gotta find the right folder here. And one was a version that Michelle had worked on with Nancy Yates.
I think the Board of Health was involved, except for Bob Palucci, no?
Was... I, no, I think the Board of Health discussion just happened at their meeting. I have no idea if they had anything in front of them, I...
I don't think that the gentleman that spoke was very well informed about what was presented and what had been presented as an alternate.
Okay, I, I have no, I did not watch the Board of Health meeting yet, so.
Misunderstood and bashed based on previous version and what wasn't liked and whatever.
Yeah.
Uh, Michelle, when you worked on your revisions or the, the changed open space bylaw with Nancy, was anyone else involved?
Yes, it was myself, Nancy Yates, I'm a county hall, Ed, the Board of Health agent, and Chris Pratt, the chairman of the Board of Health. And we got together, we worked through some of the previously mentioned issues that the Board of Health have had. And the bulk of the edits were based on Sherborne. And I think Bob Palucci had it in, he said that this was still based on the Fox Spiro, which does not have as much well water and septic as we do here. But Sherborne does not have town water, it's mainly well water as well, and septic systems, so it far more resembles Lakeville. He was also referring to it as creating new zoning, which it's not creating new zoning, it's just an open space residential design and standard. So I think it would be great to get everybody on the same page. I don't know if we're interested in doing a joint meeting with the Board of Health, but that would be my suggestion, because he said that he planned to stand up at town meeting and, and, you know, voice his disapproval, and it was quite a bit of misinformation, so I think it would be best to address all of the questions and, and misinformation.
Well, I had spoken to Ed, and basically, um... My understanding was, although I didn't watch the meeting, that there wasn't really any Board of Health-related objections in here, because I also don't see any very specific Board of Health-related new regulations, aside from one thing, which I wouldn't recommend, is that the Board of Health has to approve all the lots. And I think it's, it's more of a recommendation that the planning board has to, would, would follow along. Would follow rather than a straight approval from the Board of Health. And then, and, and my understanding is, is at the Board of Health meeting, Bob Palucci had, again, no specific concerns related to Board of Health issues that, and, and he wasn't very specific about to, why he was opposed to it either, so.
Mark, is that on the proposal?
Well, he was talking about lot sizes, and he was saying he was not on, on board or in favor of changing the lot sizes, because he said he had gone in a certain direction because of the issue with the smaller lot sizes, and he was opposed to it because the smaller lots tend to have to come back in, in front of the board, and then they need a variance because of their septic and the well of their neighboring lots, so, um... Even, even if it's not pertaining to Board of Health, it, if, I think it's the perception, we need to make sure, because we already brought it to spring town meeting and it failed, I, I don't want to keep bringing it and having it fail. I'd rather wait till next spring to get it done, if it takes that long to do it right. But that's just my opinion, I don't know if anyone else on the board agrees.
Well, we definitely want to get it right. I, I guess I feel like we should be able to find some sort of a middle ground between the original proposed bylaw and the one that you guys worked on to satisfy all parties. To be clear, Mark, this is a zoning change, right? Would it go on the zoning map as an overlay on the whole sound, or?
It's not a zoning map, it's, it's a, it's a change of the zoning that allows you to, um... To do this type of development, provided you meet the standards, so, um... It's a zoning change related to lot size, like dimensional standards, and then, you know, the meat of the bylaw is, well... What do you have to comply with in order to get those smaller lots?
Right.
So it's a dimension, it's kind of like a dimensional change.
And the reason I say that is not to be...
It's something that's only going to be allowed in residential.
The reason I say it is not to be argumentative with you as much as, I'm looking to have discussion now tonight, so that if we needed to talk to Mr. Palucci, who seemed to show the opposition, just to be, for us to be prepared with, it's not a zoning change, it's dimensional requirements for residential building where the town gains open space, and, and only in that instance, when it's approved, do they get the smaller lots.
That's correct. And the, the, the smaller lots that we're talking about here are at least 30,000 square feet. And, and I think the biggest issue that the Board of Health has related to septic locations and well locations is in these...
We talked about that back in the day, I think before we even had this, me, you, and Nate talked about like spite wells.
Yeah, and, and as well as the fact that you have places like Clark Shores and, and some of the other little neighborhoods where you have really small lots, so...
This is a huge improvement.
Five thousand, seven thousand, 10,000 square feet, these are 30,000 square foot lots.
Right, the house I grew up in was 33,000 square foot house lot, which is great. It's a three-quarter of an acre lot, it was fine, I mean, you don't want to mow that much grass all the time, and it's not a drop in property value to be that big. And with urban sprawl, it's a great opportunity to, to do that and gain open space back. I, I think it's all, it's all good. I think it's the sales pitch at this point to, to get those people that are either gonna speak out against it or accept it. Can we, I, I know you had some comments about the, the proposed change bylaw that they, they had worked on with some definitions and some other things that you felt were either just not necessary or whatever. Do you think you could go through that and find a happy?
Well, I have gone through it, I mean, I can kind of, just, uh, from a high level, just kind of go through each section and just... And then the board can discuss each section. So, so for example, purpose of intent, there's a whole page of purpose of intent instead of a few short paragraphs. It's, it's, I, I don't want to say it's meaningless, it's good to have a purpose of intent, but I mean, one sentence could suffice. You know, so... But, but there's nothing in here that's that objectionable. The, there should be another sentence under one for F related to recreational use, but, um... You know, as a, as a, something that's, you know, desirable, but, you know, the revised language is fine. I wouldn't object to it.
Okay, uh, under definitions, would you, Michelle?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to mention, because he's talking about the purpose and intent, that was, that language was what was key for the grant money that Nancy was talking about. So that's why we made sure to include all of that language that would open that up to you. As far as like the green infrastructure, low-impact development, um... All of that language, if I would...
Okay, all right, that's good to know, and I don't think Mark had a, he just said he didn't have an objection to it. It's just, it's more language, and he just recommended adding an F under number one for recreational use. Moving on through, you go through, one goes to definitions, one goes to dimensional and design requirements.
So I think, as far as the definitions, I really don't think these definitions are necessary. These are all very basic, um, things. Usually you're trying only putting definitions for when you have something that really needs to be defined.
Can't they just be an appendix?
Well, I mean, they really should be, all, all the definitions in the zoning bylaw, when we reorganize the zoning bylaw, will be in a single definition section. So again, you, you really only want to define things that might need, might, might be specific to a particular type of use.
That's fine.
You know, there's nothing in here that's specific, that's...
Michelle, I noticed in the copy that you guys worked on, you reduced the frontage to 50 feet. Is there a reason for that? From, we had all talked about, we had 100 feet on the first one, because we didn't want to cut it more than... Like we're going less than a third of what we currently have, and that was a sticking point.
50 is...
What section, Mark? I don't recall doing that.
7.10.5, dimensional and design requirements.
Oh, okay, um, I only changed what was in red, so that was what, it must have been whatever version I had.
Okay, so we want to put that back to 100 feet then?
That's the frontage, correct, Mark?
Correct.
And then does the front yard and side yard stay that, setbacks or remain as, as written here, 25, 20, and 25?
It looks like both previous bylaw and this one are, so I don't see why not. Height 35 feet, number of stories, two and a half, are all the same. Lot coverage at 40% on both. You just called out land covered by structures, parking and paved areas. Towers are not permitted, they're put in there, on both, actually, that's in both. The only thing that, if we changed that to 100 feet, we had the asterisk on the one that we had worked on previously with you, Mark, about the board may allow a 20%, uh, allow 20% of the lots to have frontage reduced to as much as 50 feet.
Right.
So I think that we should keep that in there. We talked about on outside corners of roadway to still gain decent-sized lots. So dedicated open space is the next section. Was was some of this read in 7.10.6 Michelle was that read to achieve the requirements for the grant for conservation or APC or was this to appease Board of Health concerns or anything like that? And there are two number sixes.
Four.
In the new or her changed version.
So some of the open space language is fine again it's just more explanations but. Do you want to wait a second?
Oh, sorry, Mark, I forgot I was commuted I was.
Oh.
I had added I had added that red all that red from the Sherborne and my thought was add more and we can just take off whatever is not necessary.
Okay, I tell you what I don't want to keep us here all night kind of go line by line through this can we all take like the next week or two and go through this?
I've got some time for this one.
I mean I don't have a lot of problem with some of the changes but Michelle I don't know if you heard on that same section 710.6 you have two number sixes?
Yeah, I just thought that too and actually this I think we did make some changes after meeting with the Board of Health and this doesn't have it so I'll send out that more recent version also.
So one of the big things that's in here is homeowners association and that 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 like a huge portion of most of the rest of this document relates to the homeowners association and how do you enforce and and the rules and all sorts of other things and I think the board really should discuss whether you really want to continue on with having homeowners association only open space we've discussed in the past the problems associated that can can happen when that occurs and I think.
So I think one of the reasons we put that back in the fray was because conservation didn't want to adopt so we wanted the option.
Well, I think that's that's more of the management issue with the with the town that that if conservation doesn't have the staff and the and the resources to do that then they need to go to the administration as we've discussed before and say that we're expending all of our budget and we don't have time to once a month go buy a few extra properties to make sure that they're in an okay condition and that they haven't been impinged upon I mean let's just say that they this past year there was additional funding that was not expended.
But if you build a neighborhood like this it brings a tax base that you should be able to allocate some of that tax a small amount to maintain the open space that we gain from it I have no interest in in this being a homeowners association zero interest I won't even I'll go against the town right then and there if they say oh one of the choices is homeowners association this has to be maintained open for the town of Lakeville and only you know and the road going to it I mentioned this before public way only no private ways so.
That's my concern about Lake LeBaron Hills the homeowners association near these.
Yeah, they can restrict access.
Yeah.
Everything else and and we have it in here that it should be public and but you know again you're setting yourself up for some future fight with some future homeowners association and then the administration has to make a choice do we spend town resources fighting an association you know or not it depends and you know are you fighting against your own citizens you know so and then who has more power I think it's it's way better if you set it up so that to prevent that from ever occurring you know it's it's basically unnecessary you know and then you have to deal with encroachments and then homeowners associations not wanting to enforce encroachments by lot owners against their own homeowners association members so again that's that issue as well.
Okay, so make that amendment as well to try and back out some of that homeowners association stuff. Did anybody else want to comment on any other changes to what's in front of us?
One thing I did see and then I read it through several times and I was like okay I'm better with it is that you could crisscross it with a driveway the open space you can crisscross it with a driveway or a path and then I started to think about it at first I was like well that's wrong I mean you know you don't want to but then I was like that's not so bad actually I could see that being used and not being detrimental because if you need to get to people's places you could still have a large open space and you know but but I think that that gets a little that.
Yeah, I mean again this is a special permit so you need to be you need to be kind of careful.
Yes.
About that and think about that when you're looking at the layout.
Right.
For example, we did one in Foxborough where I think it was one of the ones I showed you where there was a big loop road with all the lots around the outside and then some open space behind them and then up in one corner but the inside was also technically open space.
Right.
The drainage from the road went in there but it was probably well over an acre maybe even closer to two acres so it was considered part of the open space but it was separated by the road so.
Okay.
In that design it was good to have that flexibility.
Right.
So we'll keep that on the agenda for the next meeting and everybody come back with some comments and information on all this stuff we've discussed.
Yep.
Next item is modifying setbacks and lot coverage in the business industrial zone. So what's the intent and reason for this I know I talked one time I think about some of the setbacks in business zone are kind of tough.
Right, so so the as we discussed last time and I left the folder at the town hall so I'll just explain is that now that we have passed site plan review that allows us to control lot coverage right and and well site design and building design right that we can increase lot coverage in the commercial districts in the industrial district from 50% to 70% because what you're utilizing your big box standards for exceed going 10% and then another 10% on lot coverage and that bylaw is really designed for big box stores and you know but you're applying it to pretty much any commercial or industrial project so I would I would say recommend that you you go to the 70% as a bright and then you can review the site design and the building design.
Don't feel as though you lose any kind of bargaining chip at all really?
I don't.
Okay.
I don't think so at all because you have plenty of authority written into your site plan review bylaw so.
I guess I'm concerned about going to 80% I mean it's.
Well, I would I think what the draft I passed out at the last meeting said 70% and then by special permit allowing them to go to 80%.
Right, but you have industrial at 80% I don't know 50 to 70 just is a big jump to me that's my opinion.
But we've been allowing.
I agree.
70 70% by right I mean virtually not by right but you've been issuing special permits for that additional 20%.
How often have we issued special permits just?
I don't know how often you've done that.
I mean has it been done a lot?
Well, Kenneth the the building in Kenneth Welsh is exceeding 70% now you know the one we just met two or three times.
Three, ten, twelve.
That's 70 plus. That place needs 80% but I don't know if I don't know if that's going to fix it.
They need a bigger building they need a bigger property.
Yeah, I don't want to I don't want to see them go but I but they yeah they do.
I'm not okay with going from 50 to 70 by right I think we just we have too much wetlands too much flood zone it goes against our hazardous mitigation plan I'm not comfortable with it.
But site review would bring that up right if there was.
Yeah.
Wetland issues that type of thing whether it stays at 50% or goes to 70% site review would catch that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
That that's why I think keeping at 50 and then giving it to 70 when it's warranted rather than by writing but that's that's my opinion.
I guess if I were to think of it what's your thoughts on splitting that and not doing anything with business not increasing business to 70% and just doing industrial I'm more apt to.
Or how about this? What if you kept the business in the equation and I guess my problem is if you have an acre and a half lot in business it becomes unappealing because you can't put your parking but you have a 70 acre lot in industrial park and you can cover 60 acres.
Right, I mean we've we've said how valuable the industrial park is we want industry in there that's that's where it belongs that's the best place for it.
Industry but not business.
Correct, that's why I'm yeah so you're saying 50 is too low for business typically?
Lots along most of your lots along Main Street where it becomes commercial.
Right.
Like the Star Liquor going towards Middleborough.
Yes.
Aren't very deep and they are in that probably one to two acre size range all the way up there and so.
And that's where we want business.
And that's where you want business.
You know I've talked to engineers and they say the setbacks are really tough being 40 40 that.
Yeah, I mean these are really restricted.
Yeah.
Lots are 175 feet wide you're knocking off 80 feet right off that the building can only be so big and if you want a nice business I think it's that's where I think we need to help is small business not industrial you know to maybe give relief on one setback on one side setback allow them by special permit to go closer to one lot line to say within 20 or 25 feet so they could shift the driveway to the right of the building and the building could be close to the lot line they could fit a little bit bigger building allow them more lot coverage on a two acre lot on Main Street so that they could actually put a nice business with sufficient parking.
Right.
How many times we get a place that doesn't have enough parking and now we're not going to let them cover the lot?
Every time.
Yeah, every time yeah but I'm less concerned with a 40 acre industrial site than I am with I'd rather see more small business in town than we don't have a lot of other industrial land that we need to rezone.
That that I would agree with other than what we just discussed you know the industrial is not a huge portion of the town by any means it's the smallest zone.
And we don't have any industrial that's undeveloped except for stuff that is miszoned up by the high school.
Right and no one that's really not even in the equation without water so it's done.
But if it's big enough they can do a public water supply well because all they have to do is create the well radius.
So am I hearing you Mark that you feel that 70% for business would be more conducive to business coming in and not changing then the industrial from 50 to 80?
I don't know if it makes sense but I guess I'm saying we maybe tier it based on lot size so and again a lot of this is like preexisting stuff where if you have again to Mark's point there's a lot of lots along Main Street that are business zoned that you couldn't fit a business on because of our requirements our setbacks our lot coverage and that's like Master Plan the little villages that we're supposed to create around the lights at Route 79 and 18 and from Star Market that way and you know Master Plan and SERP had recommended reduce the parking requirements in those areas try to get bike racks and things like that and you could allow more lot coverage and be a little bit more lenient on the parking deal but you can allow a little bit more lot coverage on an acre and a half lot to be able to make it work. So I guess my point is if you had a lot that's under three acres maybe you allow a little bit of relief but I don't want to allow a little bit of relief on a 20 acre lot.
Right.
That's where I'm coming from that's kind of.
I would agree with tearing it somehow. But for flat 70% to everyone I mean I get concerned about in looking at the zoning max as to how some land is zoned as business that probably shouldn't be zoned as business should be zoned as industrial that we'd now be giving them 70% and that's a concern I have I'd rather see it tiered.
Michelle? Muted again muted.
Sorry, this I don't know if you can see this on my phone I'm trying to hold up the zoning map there is a portion that's zoned business that's down this portion I don't know if you can see it but that's my concern I hear you Mark Main Street areas where there's not flooding concern but this this part where it's.
So we could make business A and business B?
We could do what?
What's that?
Maybe make business A and business B so if you excluded that area if you were worried about the MS4 stuff and drainage and flooding?
Yeah, and even and then the part around S Longstead I just I think there's certain areas where it's.
They're going to be if they're within a flood zone and they're within a Zone A or anything like that or or within four or fewer water supply there's so many constraints anyway.
Yeah, I'll compare the business zone districts and see where they sit within flood zone I'm assuming you're talking about the area near Town Hall where the business zone runs down Bedford Street from the set of lights.
That is one of them and then there's another one that's south it's you'd have to go down County Street so.
Oh, yeah, I don't think that's anywhere near a flood zone but I'll look.
We're on county, Michelle.
Um, so you know how there's like that marine store I know they had bad flooding in the past.
Heading into Freetown.
Oh, right at the town.
And that's zoned business down there.
Town line.
At least.
At the Eagles in Freetown.
The Eagles, yes, okay, yeah, I forgot about that. I was thinking where cuz where is it cuz that cousin?
Yeah.
Well, I mean again so that could be a consideration is if we do have flooding concerns could we just create a business zone A and a zone B and just make the zone B one that's in the flood plain and just exclude that from the relief that we're looking to give for business and let the small business grow where it's not going to be a flooding concern or.
I'm on board with that, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
I'll look that up and I'll have a.
Thank you.
Handout for the next meeting.
All right, so we'll keep that on the agenda for next meeting modifying lot coverage preexisting nonconforming lots so this is smaller. So this is smaller residential lots we're talking about or?
Yeah, I think that's, um, was some of the, um.
Some of the lots, say around Long Pond that have, uh.
Yeah.
Twelve thousand square foot lot and the house is pretty big and.
Yeah.
There are a lot of twenty-five percent residential.
Yeah, there are a lot of twenty-five percent. It's, um, but the, the, the flip side of that, I mean, I put it on here cause it was brought up a bunch of times, but the flip side is, is that, well, you have lots of houses like that in the neighborhood. Now you start allowing some to have a higher lot coverage, then, um, then it begins to affect all the other houses as opposed to just continuing it. Now, yes, it's keeps the lot cup, lots kinda unburdened and smaller because, um, the houses, but, but that's a good thing also because of um, septic and low locations. So a really difficult, and that's where the Board of Health has some issues. Um, a lot of issues is down on those really much smaller lots, so.
And I know we've, I think we talked about this, but we've talked about it a couple of different times at Conservation where, you know, folks just go and put a patio in on the weekend and all of a sudden they exceed the twenty-five percent. Uh, and it's been valid discussion to say, could we give them some relief if we created a bylaw or something to say if they took their roof water, caught it in gutters and recharged it into the groundwater? Cause that's the whole thing is that the recharge for the flooding with that ex- ex- excessive lot coverage that's non-permeable.
Mm-hmm.
And so other towns I think have done that too, where they take the roof area, catch it and recharge it into a catch basins underground. And then you'd allow them a little bit more lot coverage.
Right.
In, in that instance only.
Yeah, you could do that. The, the, the problem is, is in a lot of those areas, the land is low and groundwater.
It's not gonna recharge anyway.
It's not gonna recharge.
They're at two feet above.
Yeah.
The.
Or six inches, yes.
Yeah.
So, um, so, yes. So, I mean, it is kind of a, uh, you know, a bit of a.
Leave that one alone and scratch it for now?
Yeah.
It might be a full battle.
I'll, I'll think about that if I have more time to, to work on an actual concrete proposal. I.
So I'm gonna scratch that. We won't keep that on the agenda and then when you feel comfortable.
Yeah.
Throw it back on.
Yeah, that would probably make most sense.
Uh, off-premise sign clarification.
Uh, that's what I passed out last meeting, um, and it had to do with something that was, we removed off-premise signs as being not allowed in the, uh, new sign by law. However, in, under special permits, uh, we accident, uh, well, we didn't realize it was in here that's off-premise signs. Um, um, can get a special permit. So we wanted to remove that section, um, in here. So you in, so because now we have a conflict.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So we're not changing what we did. We're catching something else.
Yeah, just like we did with something else in the spring. Was it boats or something? Boat storage?
That was, that was keeping things, yeah.
It was removed, but, but in the notes it hadn't been removed, so. So, um, so that was that one.
Okay. Uh, development opportunities district revisions.
Mm-hmm.
So we talked about elimination is on the agenda for next week.
That's correct.
For the public hearing.
Two weeks.
Not, not two weeks, sorry.
Yes, that's correct.
Uh, July twenty-eighth meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and then we talked about possibly coming up with something to, still entice business to come to town, but either localize areas or amend what's within the existing by law that may be removed.
Right. So I, I prepared just a couple of things here which are, um, well, first off, this is something, maybe Michelle or somebody had sent me this, which, where, um, little circles have been, have been placed on the town GIS around.
Highway, highway ramps.
Highway ramps, that's correct, in a, uh, one mile and half a mile radius. Um, so I have that. And so. Anyone wants to, I got a few extra copies since I think some people might.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, yeah. And so this is a, I believe when you started the discussion at one point, maybe a year ago, this, this had been prepared. So you can see that, um, the other nice thing about this is it's overlaid onto the, um, lot, the parcel map.
Yeah.
So that you can kinda see, even though there might be a big circle, there's not a lot of parcels within some of these circles.
So just for a clarification for me and everyone else, Mark, i- if, have you seen something like this before generally?
What do you mean?
That the radius is from the highway type of to, to create a zone?
Um.
And, and I guess what I'm getting at is you just brought up the point that not a whole lot of lots are entirely within that space. Would you half-zone a lot if it, if this radius went halfway through a lot?
Yeah, so I wouldn't do that. I would zone the entire parcel. This was, I think, prepared just to give the board a sense of what's, what's located.
Right.
Close to highway exits, okay? So that you can then kinda look at the map and the parcel maps. It, it doesn't mean that you can't pick a big parcel smack in the middle of, of town, you know, where there's no circles and no good access, you, that you couldn't just for some reason propose that. But I would say this is a good way of kinda looking at where, where, where you might wanna locate, um, something like this. So if we, if we just kinda go through and just, instead of the little circles, just flip to the big circles. I think it's just easier. And if we start at the top of the map, um, you know, we're up around that, the four ninety-five where there's, there's two exits, uh, just over the line in Middleborough by the Rotary.
Yep.
So the biggest piece there is, is crass, crat, cross-hatched in green and that's the, I believe that's the Ocean Spray, uh, headquarters property. So, and that already has its own overlay district. So, um, I don't think that's anything that, uh, you would want to change the zoning on. Um, there is industrial land already there and there's some business zone land along forty-four as well. So, um, there's, um, there is one kinda large piece below that business zone land there. I don't know what, um.
You're talking right here, this triangle?
Right on the, uh, right, toward where it says Rainham on the town line with Taunton.
Okay, yes.
Yeah. So just below the, the red land, uh, the, uh, and so I'm not entirely sure what that is, whether that's a, a lot of wetlands in there. Yeah, I think, I think it is.
Across street.
Mm-hmm. So I think that's why that's, um, undeveloped there. So if it's all wetlands, it's, you wouldn't wanna rezone that area. Um, or expand the business zone in that area. Um, now, if you, there is one parcel there. So if you, um, from the, uh, go down Bedford Street to the bottom of the, uh, the outer ring, uh, along the railroad tracks on the, uh, where it abuts the current industrial district, there's a large parcel there of over a hundred acres. Slightly over a hundred acres that, uh, is bounded by Middleborough and, uh, the, the railroad bed. And, uh, it has access on Bedford Street and it's about a hundred and five acres.
I think it's directly, the entrance to it is directly across from Joe's Gas.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah. So I have not had a chance to drive down there. Yeah.
It's a residential house lot.
It's a residential house and apparently I, the, the person.
They had a horse stable, I think, out there.
Yes.
For a bit and, uh, the, the, the original owner of that property, well, the original person that developed it to be what it currently is, was a developer, local.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Gene Bartlett, and he had his trucks and stuff like barn out there to park them as well as, it's a kind of a retreat lot.
Right.
Type of setup.
Mm-hmm. And I think it's being used that way by the current owner who, um, I believe is a veterinarian and, um, that's what I was told and he has, um, he raised, he has, he may have horses and other animals and stuff like that. So that's just a blow up of the property. Now, it doesn't mean that we can't consider rezoning it just because he's using it as, uh, another property five or ten or thirty years down the road, you know, it may be desirable to, to, um, to redevelop that at some point into an industrial piece. But whereas it's currently a large parcel with really close highway access, maybe something that we look into further.
Yeah.
As far as, um, you know, either, either extending the, the industrial district over or we apply, we keep the DOD and we apply it to that parcel there. And then we can kinda, at the next meeting, maybe discuss, um, uh, you know, what we may wanna do and look at the differences between the two districts.
Are we looking, Mr. Chair, to do this in two steps? First, remove the DOD from how it is now?
That, that.
And then do recommendations on where DOD should be? We're not looking to do it together, are we?
Well, it's currently happening together, not in lockstep. We're acting tonight on both, our next meeting as well. So we're holding the public hearing to remove the development opportunities district at our next meeting.
Right.
So that's a sole action.
Correct.
However, to Mark's efforts, we are currently looking at if we wanted to, in a way, once it's removed, amend or adjust, basically using the same terminology and instead of having it overlaid over the whole town, pick a few spots that might work that we would want.
But would we be doing that as two separate actions?
Yes.
Okay.
But we're doing it concurrently.
Correct.
But it, it may not happen. Th- this, this action we're doing right now may not happen at fall town meeting, but we're working on it.
Right. But we're hoping that removal of the DOD does occur at fall meeting.
Well, we're holding the public hearing for that and that will make the agenda.
No, I'm, I'm good. I'm good.
Mm-hmm. That's good.
Yep. Uh, so are there any other spots that you identified?
So.
On the zoning map.
So if we look at, um, so let's just follow along four ninety-five to the highway exit closest to Middleborough where the T station is. Um, most of that land is, is used as residential or encompasses the, the former state hospital properties. And so given the emphasis by the state on building additional housing within the, uh, half mile radius from the train station, I don't think, um, although there is a large parcel there that's owned by the state that's currently used for agricultural, um, they still do something with the fields there. Um, across from the state, across Main Street from the state hospital, I don't think rezoning that for industrial or an overlay for, uh, um, this use would be, it would be more appropriate if it got developed to be used for housing. So, cause it's within, within that radius. If it ever gets developed, it may not.
Can I just say something?
Yep.
Um, that's my backyard, that field on Bridge Street. And I was told that that could never be anything on the lot it is by the one that has control of the leasing options that are on a state level. That that has to go before the legislature to be taken out of the classification that it's in that field and the field on Bridge Street.
Okay. It might be. I, I don't know. I'm just looking at.
So you just have my heart racing when you say that. There are houses over there. I'm like, oh no.
I mean, it might, it might be. And, and again, it may be something that, um, you know, if, if, uh, having some housing there is, is important from the bigger picture, you know, maybe the state acquires some other agricultural land preserve and, you know, instead and some housing gets built there. But again, I wouldn't, uh, at this point propose that, and we're talking about industrial right now or commerce, you know, I wouldn't propose that we do, uh, rezone that for, uh, the overlay.
Yeah, that's kind of a one-off.
Right.
It's not on a main road.
Yes, yeah. So, um, but I just wanted to point that out, so. And, um, so then the other, other, uh, area, if we go over again along the Taunton line, uh, there's a highway exit off of Route one forty and there already is a parcel of land that's zoned industrial B there. Um, there's a big, according to the maps, there's like a big wetland in the middle of it and some of it along the, um, this, that would be the eastern borders. There's, there's a bunch of houses, but I don't think there's really much.
So if you, if you're looking at that blue square, the, the, the south, um.
I believe that's Schaub's property, the Leonard Beef.
Leonard Beef and Bay State Disposal, the Bay State Sewer occupies a big chunk of it. And then we, we asked them, we, a number of years ago, we said to, to, would they be interested in just removing the industrial B because, you know, uh, that we didn't see it as being a, a, something we needed on our zoning map? And, um, at first they were like, sure, go ahead. You know, the, Bay State was, they.
He's pre-existing.
Exactly. And same with Leonard Beef. But the two individuals that are on the very corner, uh, they said that they felt as though that was, um, possibly negatively impacting their, um, value, uh, of their house. So we pulled it from the, uh, we never went through to the town meeting. I, I won't change somebody's zoning if they didn't want it changed, so.
So, I mean, so we already have, my point is we already have a big chunk.
Yes.
Zoned industrial right by this, uh, area and across the other side of one forty, although there's a couple larger pieces, there's a lot of other houses and I don't know whether these, like, there's two or three, whether these have been, whether there's houses on those or whether those have been broken up. I can look into that a little bit more, but I'd be.
It's pretty, pretty residential there. You have to stay out in Berkeley on Route seventy-nine to be within, there's a little business district, but it's not Lakeville there.
Right, okay.
Or East Taunton in Berkeley.
Isn't that where there's like a, um, Dunkin' Donuts?
Yeah.
Gas station.
A camper, correct, RV dealership.
RV places there.
Mm-hmm. All right. So, and then the last one is, uh, contains another possibility is, um, is down at the, uh, Route one forty where it crosses, I think that's County Street. And so there is, are, there's several large parcels. Um, so let's just go like each corner of that intersection. So the, um, that would be the northwest, uh, where it says one forty on the map on the left side. There's a whole bunch of houses in there, particularly across along the frontage. So that land is in the back and much of it is wet.
Very.
And same thing on the right side, the other side of one forty, that's, uh, there's a big piece and that's all wet. And, uh, that's why the, the little housing, all that, what's that called? Something Shores.
Churchill Shores?
Churchill, yeah, Churchill something.
Yeah, there's Churchill Shores and, uh, I forget the other one's right near there. So. Lakeview Heights.
Thank you, Heights.
Um, and then if you follow down County Street and there's a long strip of commercial, and I think this is the lower strip of commercial that Michelle was talking about, being close to the pond where the, you said the, uh, Eagles is. Um, there's a lot of land between that commercial strip in, in one forty that's, uh, undeveloped there. But that is mostly wetlands and, um, two of the large parcels are owned by the town and, and the remainder are owned by, uh, I think it's Mass Audubon. So that's a preservation section. So the last big, uh, chunk or the biggest area is on the, um, the west side of one. So the last big, uh, chunk or the biggest area is on the, um, the west side of 140, uh, below County Street and that is almost 300 acres.
I was told that was just purchased.
Yes. Yes, it was, as far as I am aware.
Who is it?
The ma- majority of the property was owned in the past by A.A. Will.
Yeah, Frank Will owned that and I think he just held it to the gentleman that owns La Baron.
Yeah, that's my understanding, though I, so.
Thank you.
There are those. I should've outlined all those parcels, but it's 290 acres.
Extra one.
Very rocky.
So, um, so that area, you know, it has access right by the, uh, right off of County Street, along the highway. So this area would be, I think, a- as long as, again, we, we uphold some sort of significant setbacks along the, there are some houses, I don't know what the name of that street is there.
What? Freetown Street.
Freetown Street. So if we hold some significant setbacks or depending how we draw the line or apply an overlay, um, district in that area, that might be, um, a, a second area um, that we could, uh, we could look at a little further into, um, applying either an industrial district zoning in for, or not in or, but for a, uh, DOD overlay to.
I agree. Anybody else have any comments on those?
I'm good.
All right. Nice job.
All right, uh-
It's just to, not to back up, but these were one mile, these were one mile radiuses? Or two mile? Cause it looks bigger than a mile.
Yeah, I think-
It's a two mile circle.
It's a two mile circle, correct?
Yeah.
Radius across. Okay, one mile circle, uh, two mile circumference, or no?
Those ones are a half mile radius.
Yep.
So one mile across.
Okay.
And then the other ones, I believe, are one, one mile radius, so two miles across.
Okay, that's what I thought, yep. I was looking at some of them, I was like, that's big.
Uh, so next on the agenda, discussion of the previously submitted Development Opportunities District zoning article.
So the, the reason why that is on here is to discuss whether, um, if there is a special town meeting prior to the regular fall town meeting, does the planning board who submitted the article, because we always had discussed placing it on the fall town meeting, does the planning board wish to have that moved onto the warrant for a particular special that might come up between now and the regular fall town meeting?
Well, should we all go one by one? Yes.
Well, my concern is if, my understanding is the article that was submitted that would create a special town meeting is not valid because of the way it was submitted?
No, it's valid, but it was asked to be changed and it can't be changed in time for the town meeting. So they can't pull it either. They just can't, if a quorum doesn't show up, then it won't be voted on. There was some legal verbiage that was not correct in the way the petition was written and I was all the-
That's how I understood it as well. Basically, the, uh, the town moderator is gonna be like the only one there to, to open the meeting and close the meeting.
Right.
At the present time.
And I guess I, my thought is, I don't wanna put this on that town meeting. Are we doing it just for attendance?
Why, I thought they also said we wouldn't have time to do it.
So, uh, let me explain. So the current petition that was submitted, uh, the warrant was opened and closed by the Board of Selectmen. Uh, we haven't met since, um, June 23rd, which was well prior to the dismissal of the, uh, petition article. However, there's rumors going around that perhaps there may be another petition article that would be submitted. So the question would be if, and if there is another petition article, the Board of Selectmen will have to hold, vote to open and hold another town meeting within 45 days. Which would mean, uh, perhaps a September town meeting. Perhaps it'll be for the same petition, but with the proper language. Uh, perhaps it'll be a different petition, um, uh, related to zoning, maybe it'll be a different petition asking the selectmen to do something else. But if any petition article is submitted, the Board of Selectmen have to schedule a town meeting. And if you would like to have this moved from, as we always discuss, the fall, move it further up to whenever the next town meeting would be, not, not the one that's already scheduled. But some other interim town meeting, the Board of Selectmen would like the board, the planning board, to make a decision, uh, and inform them of that. So that was a huge part of the discussion at the last board meeting, select board's meeting, was that the planning board had originally submitted it for the fall town meeting.
Yeah, so I guess, m- m- my personal opinion, not a vote of the board, is that, yeah, it'd be, it would be fine to move up that article to a special town meeting if there was another one.
Okay.
I would agree.
Jack?
Yes.
I'm still here, Mr. Chair. I am still here. You know, screw up that.
All right, so do, do you understand what was asked?
Yes. And, and I believe this was, uh, because of my email on Friday. I did show up to the select board meeting on Monday and I did request that they, um, consider adding it, given our chance to discuss it tonight. Um-
So it's not, it's not to reopen the warrant for that meeting, though. It would be if another petition was put in, we would be on the third town meeting of the year.
Yes.
Poor Peter Goodfellow may be moderating four meetings this year.
They, they, select board did refuse to add it to the warrant for this current petition article. Um, but I thought it would be best if we could send a memo asking that they do consider it for whatever is the next town meeting held. It would've made sense to include it if, you know, in my opinion, um, if the article was a dead article, why base town resources if we could actually get something done or accomplished? Um, but that, that wasn't allowed.
So. Peter?
Nothing. The only thing is, is so we can like, almost like dual path, this will continue on with a, uh, a plan for the fall? Should this not materialize?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's all I just wanted to-
Yeah, I mean, we'll still continue discussing other areas.
The warrant for the one that's coming.
Mm-hmm. No, we can't, yes.
If another petition is filed or the next town meeting, whatever one comes first, we would like to be on that one.
Okay. I will send a memo to the board. Could you make a motion to that effect?
Uh, I move to send a memo to the Board of Selectmen to show our intent of when we would like to be on the warrant for the zoning article for the Development Opportunities District removal.
Second.
Which would be the next valid town meeting.
Yes.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Michelle? Thank you.
It sounds, I, it's Noel, I'm Noel from Berzewarav and it, it sounds like something was accomplished just now. And before I, um, you know, I, so I probably don't have much to say about it, but the better the communication is between this board and the select board, the less drama there will be going forward. I, I hope that, I hope that things get positive from here, I really do. It's nice to attend a meeting without any drama.
Thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Uh, so, moving along, uh, regarding the amendments to Development Opportunities District regulations, the rules and regs.
Oh, so I, um, I just really was gonna pass out, remember at, uh, the springtime, hmm. At, um, a meeting held earlier this spring, you guys voted to, and ladies, voted to amend the, um, rules and regs.
Yeah, right out in the foyer there, Jack.
By increasing the, uh, the setbacks and reducing the lock coverage, so, um. So I just wanted to pass that out. I guess you guys, if you would like, you can have yours and drop. Pass one of the others, but. It's on both sides. So I believe Kathy, uh, put a little star next to the, uh, the ones that were adjusted, so.
The 25% was an adjustment.
It, it was?
Oh, it was. Uh, she didn't put a little star next to that, did she? Yep, well.
Just so you know, I'm kinda holding off, uh, till Jack.
Yep.
Actually, i- if you wanna, go ahead, Mark, and we'll bring them up to speed. Basically, we, we got the changes that we voted back in the day.
Voting them, handing them out, making sure you don't have any concerns with that.
I like it. We'll go back to that and go, uh. Didn't anybody have any comments on those? Uh, you had a, next item was a discussion regarding the housing production plan, Mark.
Yeah, so, um, so the housing production plan is something, um, in the, I believe it was the fall town meeting of the year ago. Um, you had asked to have some money set aside to redo, like, those housing production plans.
You had sent that email, I think I saw, Serped was gonna get started.
Right. So Serped and I had a little meeting this, this morning, I believe. And, um, so the, that's their work plan, to get it completed by March. And, um, in a copy of a housing production plan community survey that they utilized in Mansfield when they recently, um, actually looks like it's, they're currently using the survey, so, um, and they wanted us to review it and make any recommendations for changes to the survey. Uh, so I figured I'd, I'd let you know, I'd pass it out and we can kinda review it on our own and then discuss it at the next meeting. Um.
Do we have to take the quiz?
Unless you wanna go through it now and see, see how, how you do.
The circles here.
Without studying.
Good night, thank you.
Bye. Have a good one, Lois.
Thank you.
I'll take it as homework.
Okay.
Sounds like a couple weeks.
All right, so, um, what they, ideally, if we, uh, what they'd like to do is to do a meeting with the planning board in October, at one of our October meetings.
Serped.
Serped, yes, as, as it relates to the, and that way they can present, uh, some of the information that they will have compiled related to housing, you know, updated information from the plan that was completed five years ago and they'll update all that information. They'll be able to present it to you. Um, hopefully, the survey will be completed and they'll be able to compile the results. So if we can review this at the next meeting, maybe finalize it at the meeting after that, uh, so that they can get it, so it looks like they have, um, this housing survey open for one month, for the month of July in Mansfield. So if they kept it open for the month of September here in Lakeville, that they could, um, cause it's an electronic thing, they could compile the, you know, it rather quickly and be able to discuss the results of that as well on the October 1st. Or October meeting, whatever.
Sounds good.
So.
Nice.
Does that conclude the information for, for that?
That's all I have to report on the housing production plan.
Have a good one, Barbara. Uh, so the next item on the agenda is to review the following zoning board of appeals petition, which is Hurst 8 Edgewater Drive.
Yeah, that's, um, at the office. That's the one in the folder that I left there. Yeah.
Uh, have you seen this?
Didn't we have this before on a previous meeting?
I don't believe so, it's a-
We do get a lot on Edgewater Drive.
Right.
Yeah, the, they wanna, uh-
Then no, I don't believe I have.
Raise the structure, um, not raise it, and take it down, pop the top, yeah, and, and add, uh, some living space to the second floor and put a new roof and a porch on.
Entirely residential?
Yes.
No business, uh, relations at all?
There's nothing, the application doesn't say much, but there's, doesn't appear to be. Why is there any business in that area?
If there was an in-home business or somebody doing something, I know there's a few contentious spots over that way where some people conduct business, like in-home business, but they kinda stretch it to the limit. Uh, and I, I don't like to have the planning board get involved in residential setback things. Uh, but sometimes if there's business relations, I'd wanna make comments.
It says in the application, they're not changing any setbacks. They're just increasing the height of the structure, so.
And it's a residential?
That's correct. Yeah. I have not been by there yet. I will go by prior to the zoning board meeting.
Okay.
Make a motion of no comment from the planning board?
Second. All right. Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Michelle, you still with us? Okay. Motion carries with a majority. Uh, correspondence. Anything? We, we did just a bunch of stuff.
Um, yeah, again, that's in the planning board folder that I left at, uh, uh, but most of it is just notices from other communities. Um, there wasn't, uh, any major, huge project- most of it is just notices from other communities, um, there wasn't uh, any major huge projects in the abutting towns that I usually try and highlight.
So if you get back and you feel that there's something in there, you want to.
I'll send it an email, I'll scan it in and send it out.
Perfect.
To everybody.
Thank you. Uh, it's already been said tonight, but our next meeting is July 28th, 2022, at 7:00 PM. That will be a joint meeting at 7 o'clock with the zoning board of appeals.
That's correct, their regular meeting will start at 6, and we'll take care of their regular business.
And will it be here, or are we at the gallery?
We will be at the gallery, at the library, yes.
And what's the purpose of the meeting?
Uh, 310 Kenneth Walts Drive.
Uh?
Uh, because we have site plan stuff that we're trying to resolve, and they have special permit stuff that I think they have to deal with, so the effort was to get both boards together, because some of the stuff we have may affect what they draft for the special permit.
Yep.
Uh, unless this is just the lock coverage thing, they're looking for relief.
So with the zoning board, they're looking for relief on the lock coverage.
So they're looking to go to 73% lock coverage?
That's correct.
With that new plan that.
So, so they're going to the zoning board for the, for the variance to go up to 73%, and then they're coming here for a site plan review.
Got it.
So, um, and so we thought we'd have a joint discussion, joint presentation.
What else do we have that night, a lot or nothing else?
Public hearing for the Development Opportunities District at 8 o'clock.
In the library, so, so.
And then we have talk about all this.
And.
What about the, so what does the ZB, uh, what does the ZBA have after we discuss them, or are they done at that point?
No, they're done.
They're starting.
Okay, I just didn't want two meetings going at once like crazy times.
So that's why we, we started them an hour earlier.
Okay.
So that they can take care of the regular business.
Hopefully, they've got their regular business done.
Then we'll overlap, then they'll adjourn, when we're done with 310, they'll adjourn, and then we'll continue on with the rest of our planning board meeting.
Okay.
Excellent.
Uh, any other business that probably comes before the planning board?
Um, just to.
Anything that was handed out that I missed, could you just put a packet together, I'd rather next week?
Okay, yep, um, one, just one.
You can have mine, Michelle.
You're going to get like four packets.
I was like five, five different copies.
So, um, uh, just one general announcement, in case anyone might be watching right now, is that the uh, Community Preservation Committee uh, um, is going to hold their first meeting next Thursday at 6:00 PM in this building at the police station, and um, to try and uh, to get organized and get some information as far as uh, what the next steps are, and what their responsibilities are, and kind of begin to uh, move that process forward, so.
Excellent.
Yay!
So put that in your schedule, Michelle.
Finally!
And uh, and uh, the other thing is, if you haven't come to town hall, make sure you get sworn in before the.
Oh, I am!
The meeting, so, okay. Um, and I believe.
We got any plans to sign over there, or?
I have the form A plan, and that is all.
Alright, uh. So I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.